Good evening. The Finance and Law Subcommittee shall come to order today, Wednesday, February 7, 2024. First off, roll call. Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
And Chairman's present. First on the agenda, we have the use of facility. See attached memo. Mrs. Monahan, maybe you can fill us in.
Absolutely. This is one of the upcoming scheduled events that is going to be hosted at the Friedman Middle School. As you can see, Steps in Motion School of Dance will be using Friedman in May 26th and then again in June 9th. So again, this is just something for your records.
Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to receive the memo and place it on file.
Second it.
Second on discussion. So just for folks at home, the X's mean that those rentals, custodian, police, fire facility managers are being charged to the organization, correct?
Correct, because they are considered a profit. If it was nonprofit, then we would not be charging the organization.
You'd evaluate it. Great, great. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have the special education expense/service. See attached memo. Back to you, Mrs. Monahan.
This is a regular memo update on Lyons Law Group for legal services for special education, and this is for December 2023. The services charges were equalling over $3,000. Total charges year-to-date is $10,325.76, which leaves a balance of our $50,000 budget, line item budget for this charge of $39,674. And again, I will always provide you updates when we do have charges on the warrant.
Excellent. Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the information. Mrs. Monahan, I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Item 3, Bills Payable, FY '24 in the amount of $2,601,837.33. What are the wishes of the committee? Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the bills payable in the amount of $2,601,837.33.
Second it.
On discussion. Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Page 12, Coaching for Change. Can we have an update performance on the data for the program since it started in September? I don't know if it's possible if we can get them in or the information for the March meeting?
Bring them in or bring our principal in?
Whatever's more appropriate, whatever you find to be more appropriate. That way we can have an understanding of, yeah, where we're at. Yes.
Can we add that to the motion? Please.
And Karen, can you make a note too that we'll add that to the action item list so we don't lose track of it?
Okay.
Please and thank you.
Okay. Mr. Viera, anything else on the warrant?
That's all I have.
Mrs. Shavz, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Chairman has two questions. On page 5, we have the Associates for Human Services, also known as the TASK, similar to what Mr. Viera just requested. An update on where we stand with that organization. They usually come before us in the past, I believe. I know they come before us to ask to be
We should get enough there.
To be part of the program and, you know, and we invest a lot of money. And I know Mr. Viera and I have been to their facilities before we upped them up again. So maybe we can add that to the motion to bring them in. And when we say bring them in, we probably don't want to do it to year-end. Maybe in March sometime, if not conflicting with budget priorities and so forth. Maybe even April.
Yeah, I would say that way, again, we can assess, right? See what the results are from what we're giving and what we're getting back before we make a decision on forward, if that's appropriate.
Same thing, and add to that to the action item. Thank you.
Wonderful. And I have one more comment on page 28. Where is it? Here. I'd like to be recorded as voting present on the voucher number 21994, the amount of $6,960 to Pride Inc., as I serve on the Board of Directors and on the Finance Committee. So if we can just amend the motion to include those two items or those three items.
So amended.
Mrs. Shavz, you okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chairman votes aye. Ayes have it. And that concludes the Finance and Law Subcommittee report.
Motion adjourned.
Second it.
All in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it. Adjourned. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. The first regular February meeting of the Taunton School Committee should come to order Wednesday, February 7, 2024. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
On Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on my nation under thy invisible liberty and justice.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Kyler remains standing. As we open up with a prayer from Secretary Fagan.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people trusted to our care. And just have a moment of silence for a couple of individuals who've passed away. The first one is Margaret M. Margot McLaughlin. She was born in Dorchester, the daughter of the late James and Elaine Anderson, grew up in Dorchester, became a nurse, and she was founded her passion as a registered nurse, where she cared for many years at South Shore Endoscopy and Braintree, and most recently at South Shore Hospital in Weymouth. She was married to Francis Allen McLaughlin and was the stepmother of Heather McLaughlin, Kevin McLaughlin and his partner Amanda Shay, and the cherished grandmother of several children she is of grandchildren. She is also the sister of Janet Anderson of Taunton, who is the president of our teachers' union. So our sympathies go out to Janet and her family for the loss of her sister. The second one is Barbara Fox. Barbara Fox was a lifelong resident of Brockton. She was a graduate of Brockton High School, worked in the Brockton Public School first as a teacher's aide and then later as an administrative assistant. Assistant, she worked part-time after retirement at Shaw's Supermarket, at the customer service desk in Brockton, and an active member of the Brockton Women's Guild, Sons of Italy, Boston J.C., Brockton J.C., excuse me, Red Hat Society, and Emmanuel Baptist Church. She leaves four sons and their wives and several grandchildren. And one of her sons is our own Michael J. Fox, the voice of Taunton High School. So our thoughts and prayers also go out to Mrs. Fox and to the whole Fox family. So a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And roll call.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan, he has the roll call.
Okay. Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
Mr. Plowski's absent. Mrs. Fagan's present. Ms. Santos.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
And Dr. DeMello.
Present. Thank you. Next up, we have approval of minutes, January 17, 2024. Which is the committee?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second on that.
And on discussion, Mrs. Shavz.
I had one question on the minutes.
Sure.
Just a further clarification. When we asked about how the students were getting home from that field trip.
Which page?
Page 8. Do we have an answer to that?
I don't know. Do you have a minute to get you an answer?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we followed up.
And when is that field trip taking place?
Oh, Mr. Barata has an answer?
Oh, Mr. Barata.
Yes, Martin responded back, "The fee is $75," and we're just corrected. "Students will be picked up by their parents," and that was clarified on the slips going out.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris.
Just a question if I could. Thank you, Mrs. Shavz. Mr. Laura.
Was there a question about the time of arrival? Was that one of the considerations?
No, it was more that there was different prices on the two different things we saw that I believe you had brought up, and that it stated that the kids would have a ride home. And I was like, are we bringing all the students home? Or, that's how it was worded. It sounded like that was the case, which seemed unreasonable.
And that was due, they were going to New York City, and they weren't going to get back till 11 o'clock or midnight. So we were concerned, and thank you, Mrs. Shavz, for the follow-up. Next up, we have the Student Advisory Committee Report, and with us tonight, we have Leanna Mora, who is a sophomore at Taunton High. Leanna, welcome.
Welcome. This is a little bit about Taunton High School as of lately. I'll start off with our sports team. So many of our sports teams have been doing extremely well this year, and many of them are advancing to their respective state championships. Regardless of their advancing or not, we're proud of our teams and their hard work and the dedication to their sports. Additionally, Taunton High School was lucky enough to have 87 of our juniors and seniors inducted into the National Honors Society recently. We want to congratulate all the new inductees, and we'd also like to give a special thank you to advisors, Mrs. Barber and Ms. Gibson. Everyone's hard work has definitely not gone unnoticed. Mr. THS 2024 will be making a comeback this March. We're all super excited to see what this year's contestants have in store for us. And tomorrow at the high school, we are hosting a parent night for juniors and their families to come and learn more about the college application process, as that's something they'll have to be worrying about very soon. Doors open at 6 for any junior and their family that wants to learn more about college and how they can prepare themselves for this new stage of their lives. Excuse me, Taunton DECA and the Skills USA program have recently begun testing for their respective competitions. Taunton DECA will be attending the state conference this upcoming March. We wish all competitors in DECA and Skills USA the best of luck. And as for daily life at Taunton High School, we've had a couple of small changes to our lunchtime habits. So now more than ever, clubs and organizations are using our lunch periods as fundraising opportunities. So an example of this is our Tenacity Club, which is using the lunch to sell Valentine's Day candy grams to raise money for their organization. It truly is one of the best times to be able to interact with other students and help gain traction for our causes. Additionally, we've improved our senior lounge just by adding some extra seating in there to make sure our seniors have as much space as possible during lunch in their designated lounge. So that concludes my report. Thank you all for your time and your attention.
Thank you so much. Yes, as Leanna said, our athletic teams are off and running and spending a lot of time in the gym lately, supporting boys' basketball, girls' basketball, wrestling, even ice hockey. I've gone to get to ice hockey, and a lot of our members have come along, and it's exciting. I just wish we had more students in the crowd. So Leanna, if you can work on that, since you're only a sophomore, bringing more of our students to the attendance, that would be perfect. Any questions or comments from the committee members to Leanna? Nothing? Great. Thank you.
To accept the report.
Second on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Leanna, you're welcome to stay or you can leave. Thank you so much.
Motion to excuse.
Next up, we have public input. Mrs. Fagan.
Want me to read this?
Yep.
In accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines will be provided upon sign-up, and individuals will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual have to speak will be determined by the number of people who sign the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. I don't know if there's anybody here.
Is there any public input tonight?
There was no public input.
Okay, great. Thank you. No public input. Next up, we're moving on to Item E, the Human Resources Presentation, and with us tonight, we have, oh my God, Dr.?
Cheryl Butts.
Cheryl Butts. How could I forget your name? Oh, my God. Sorry about that, Dr. Butts.
With a name like that, how could you?
I know. I know.
Good point.
So before Dr. Butts begins her presentation, so here we are in February. And February is a very short month, which means March and April will be very busy months, as we'll be entering hiring season in education. So we thought it was appropriate that Dr. Butts would come before the committee and provide us with an annual update on what is taking place in the Human Resource Office, the work that she has conducted, and also her goals, which are my goals, to have improvements of how we can improve the human resource experience. So with that being said, Dr. Butts, the floor is yours. And I notice we have members of the leadership team who are here to support, so I want to thank the members of the leadership team who are here to support Dr. Butts in her presentation.
Thank you. Takes a village. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. As Superintendent Cabral says, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Dr. Cheryl Butts. I'm the executive director of Human Resources here at Taunton Public Schools, and I've been here for the last 10 years. That's a long time for me, but it speaks volumes about DPS. What we're going to do is we're going to start with my presentation here. Let's see if I can get the clicker to go. There we go. A shout-out to our communications person, Cynthia, for helping with my presentation today and trying to liven things up. Here we have the HR department, and that's my little Bitmoji. Very proud of my girls in the HR, my team, for putting together their Bitmojis. They'd rather have their Bitmojis than their pictures on board here. So we're a lean, mean HR machine, as we call ourselves, because the department consists of myself, wonderful, awesome admin assistant, Judy Moniz, that's her waving down there, and our very, very special HR specialist, Ms. Luti Vincent, who's been with us for a year. She marked an anniversary, a one-year anniversary with us this year. And we have a vacant position still that we're currently trying to recruit for, for the HR manager position. And this very lean, mean HR machine, we service 1,400 employees, 12 schools, and one virtual school, so almost like 13 schools now. So that's a lot of staff for a lean team like us, but we get the job done. I figured I'd start off tonight by just highlighting what is HR. And HR, as you know, every organization has an HR department, but in K-12, the role of the HR department's a little bit different in that we're tasked with many other jobs or the tasks that we have to do within the department. And a big part, a big thing of what we do is we recruit. And while I was putting this presentation together, I was having a conversation with my, one of my daughters, who's a college sophomore, and she was trying to ask me, why is it so important, why is my work so important? And I said to her, as I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, my job is important because I am tasked with the job of having to staff or put certificated and non-certificated staff members in front of students, highly qualified staff members in front of our students. And these educators are with our students for 180 days, all day, every day, for 13 years. Let that sink in. My own daughter was in awe when I said that. She didn't think about it like that. And if you think about it, all of us here today, at some point, we were students and adolescents, and we spent a lot of time with our teachers. And so that is why my job and our job in the HR department is so important. We get to hand-pick, working closely with the hiring managers, of who these highly qualified people are that we're going to put to support our students. Another thing that I'd like to just mention here, and it's something that I, again, I try to inspire young people to come into education because that's what we're trying to do, to build up a pipeline of future educators. Teaching is the profession in which all other professions rely on. In that statement, I heard from Mr. Joe Petna, or Dr. Petna, some years ago when he started doing work, or when I started attending some of his sessions. And that really sat with me, and that really made me feel proud to be part of this K-12 journey. Just imagine, everybody that goes through K-12, they spend 13 years with these teachers. They spend more time with these teachers than they do with their dentist, at a doctor's office, with anybody else. So we have a huge impact on the future on our students. That being said, what we do in our efforts to recruit, retain, and develop employees, we always make sure we try to align what we do with the district's strategic plan and the mission and vision of the district, which of course is to provide academic excellence to every student in every classroom in every school. And we stress that academic excellence. We want highly qualified people. Besides recruitment, what else does HR do? Okay, we talked about the recruitment, and we're going to touch on that a little bit more, but we also handle performance management, employee engagement, development and training, compensation and benefits, risk management, audits and legal compliance, health and safety. We work very closely with the city, the city's HR department on the health and well-being of the employees in terms of benefits. Licenseur is a whole other hat that we wear, a whole other umbrella, and all other administrative responsibilities, such as the queries, the fingerprinting, professional teacher status, everything else falls under that. And what I'd like to touch on here, and what has come up in the past, is the onboarding process and what's involved in hiring a new person, from candidate to employee. So let's just walk through this cycle real quick, and it's really for the benefit of new members, because I may have expressed or explained this last year, but trying to get towards what we've done to improve the process. So I'm going to get to that. It's all very exciting news. So once we have a vacancy, we post for that vacancy, and that has to be posted for 10 days per the CBA, the Collective Bargaining Agreements. Once posted, the applicants are reviewed and interviews are scheduled by the hiring managers. So we work with the principals to get all these applications where they need to be. It's all done electronically now, which is great, because they could see the applications in live time. And once they've made their decision, they then recommend their candidate to hire to the Human Resources Department. At that point, they're actually handing off the work to us and for us to engage with the candidate, to share the packet and start the onboarding process. We meet with the candidates, we walk them through the process, the paperwork. The candidates also need to visit the city hall for benefits information and to sign up or to waive benefits. People that are not eligible for MTRS will go to the retirement office and sign up for retirement benefits. And once all of those tasks are completed, we're able to extend an offer letter to the individual or the candidate, whether it's either accepted or rejected. So as you can see, there's several steps in the process, and I have with me, if anybody's interested later on, a copy of what the new hire packet looks like, but I'm going to give you a checklist of what it looks like. But it's important to note that the hiring managers hand off, once they recommend a candidate for hire, it gets handed off to Human Resources. And once we send them the packet and the onboarding documents, we are at their discretion as to how long they take to fill out and return forms to us. So not everything is within our control. You know, the fingerprinting has to be done, the query has to be run. One of the, a huge win for us this year is that we worked with city hall to eliminate the pre-employment physical. That usually took a while to have an appointment set up with somebody's primary care. Sometimes it costs money out of pocket to go to urgent care or the Minute Clinic to have a pre-employment physical. So I'm very happy that we were able to eliminate that ordinance, which was enacted in 1976. So a huge win for us, and thank you to the city for that. This is what the new hire packet consists of. They're all forms. They're all policies that need to be read and signed off on, and a conflict of interest test that has to be taken. There's a training available online. That's something that's been revamped and is fairly new. So again, if you're interested in seeing the actual packet, we have the packet, and it's also available online. There's a link that links the new hire packet to everything online. This is just a little data to show you that, over the years, how we've increased the number of postings and job positions that we've advertised. Most recently, last year, we were almost up to 1,400 positions that we had to fill that were posted. What's posted isn't always the exact number of positions that's available, because we may have a posting that might say we're looking for six teachers, six, not six, well, yeah, it could be for some of the vacation schools. We have several positions. It's not just one posting for one position. You have one posting that could advertise for three, two, you know, several of those vacancies or those particular positions. So we've grown over the last few years in terms of how much job postings we've had to put out. And all those postings get generated from our office. It gets posted internally. It gets posted online, and we work with some other organizations, such as Indeed and Maspa and a couple other nonprofit orgs that allow us to advertise with them, and some of the local colleges, colleges and universities. A little more data to share with you, just so you can see the volume of applications that comes through the Human Resources Department. In April, I have April 2023, because that is when, and April is when we actually send the list of vacancies for the next school year, and we start advertising. And that's when we start getting applications to fill the next school year's vacancies. So that's what we're gearing up for busy season right now and working on that master posting. As you can see, the summer months are very busy for us, because that's when most of the applications come in. And 3,700, that's a lot, and they all come through our office, and they, we have to, they all touch us in some way. The applications, the postings, and the candidates, they all, they have to be filtered through our office, because we're the ones that vet them. We're the ones that do social media and internet searches on them. It's just fun times, but it's not the only thing that we do. And we're going to get to that. Something that I'm very excited to share, and something that the committee requested last year, was that we improve candidate communication. So this is a huge improvement. This is something that we took seriously, and with the support of Mr. Cabral and the leadership team, we worked with this vendor, Talent Ed, to put in, and I know it might be difficult to read, but there's several options that we can check off to communicate with a candidate throughout the onboarding process. Okay? I highlighted two positions filled and a thank-you, a thank-you notification. Those are the two that are most commonly used, and I'm going to show you what they look like. Once we hire a candidate, and when I say we, I mean either ourselves or the hiring manager, which would be the principals, once they click that button and they hire a candidate, whether it's Fred Flintstone or SpongeBob or whoever it might be, they then automatically enable the system to notify the other candidates that the position has been filled. Thank you for your interest in Taunton Public Schools. Now, there's another feature for those candidates that were called in and actually interviewed. There is another email that'll say, "Thank you. It was a pleasure meeting with you. We've decided to go with another candidate. We'll keep your resume on file, blah, blah, blah." So these are two features that we've been using over the past year, and we've been working very hard to ensure, but by the time the recommendation comes to us and it's time to hire the candidate, that all the other applicants are notified by this via email, all electronically done. So it's very happy to have that work successfully for us. A little bit more on what we do, just some numbers to share how busy we can get at certain times of the year, when we have leads of absences, license waivers, professional teacher status. professional teacher status awards. Loan forgiveness has been huge now with the government offering the forgiveness and the letters of suitability that we share with other districts with fingerprinting. These are all things that we've been doing that at different times of the years, they tick up, they go up, they go down, but it's stuff that we do throughout the year. Something that was very new since the pandemic was the emergency licenses. It's been a huge help. It's helped with the labor shortage and it's helping diversifying staff. And it started in 2020 and it's, it was continued. There were extensions, but of course there were conditions for the extensions. We've been quite fortunate to work with our people on emergency license to get them ready for next steps. As a matter of fact, we have a great relationship with Bridgewater State University that's offering some sort of grants to help with the preparation for MTLS and to move from that emergency license to the initial license. It's been great. We're waiting to get the final word this year. Right now, the licenses are expected to end at the end of this school year, June 24. And we're hoping to get some more feedback from the commissioner on whether or not they're going to do something to extend it even further for those people that will not be able to make the deadline of transferring from emergency to initial for next school year. And really, oh, this is a biggie. This is something that we're really proud of. This is a little bit of data taken from the Department of Ed's website to show how we've been doing in terms of diversification of staff. And we've been doing wonderful, because we have tripled, 300% increase in diversification of staff. And that's been going on for a number of years. That's been going on since I've been here since 2014, which has been one of my predecessors' goals, Attorney Mitchell, and which we continue to strive towards. Now, we've been so successful in the diversification of staff that we've been asked to share some of our recruitment strategies with local and national organizations and other districts. So we've had that great opportunity to go to conferences and conduct workshops and to share the wonderful work that Taunton's been doing. And I'm telling you that we really are ahead of the game in terms of diversification. And one of the things that we've done, and we're going to get to it. Here we are. This is fun stuff. One of the things I was going to say, so I'll just say it now, is that we've had this student internship program for education. So students in the high school can intern with us and try to experiment and explore opportunities in education. And education, and not that they could just sport, not just to be an educator, but to be a human resource person in education, a nurse, a psychologist. They don't realize there's so much more you could do in education than just simply teach. So this THS, the Summer Intern Program has been a hit. It's been going on for the last few years, courtesy Bristol Community Savings Bank, generous donation, big shout out to them. We've been able to keep this going for the last four years. And we actually have some interns that are about to start now, mid-year, and will probably stay with us throughout the summer. So that's something huge. So I'll start from the beginning. Oops, nope. I'll go back to the beginning of, ta-da, first one here, exciting news. Something that we're very excited to share is that we have been streamlining processes so that we make sure things are being done more efficiently. And we've designed a posting form for when the postings come out or when hiring managers need some of their positions posted. Instead of simply telling us, "We need to have that trail so we could track movement of people." If SpongeBob left, then Fred Flintstone replaced SpongeBob and this is the same job that he was doing. And then six years later, somebody else comes in, you know? So it's great to have that tracking system. We have the posting forms and the tracking hire, which is something that is a database that we maintain so that we have a master list and a master database of all our people, where they are, what their license, what licenses they hold and year of hire. Another thing that's been going really well, which I just shared with you, was the use of Talent Ed, the onboarding recruitment tool that we use that has allowed us to eliminate paper applications and to use the e-m messages for the thank you but no thank you letters. Something else that we've been monitoring now, exit interviews. Because we really want to retain, we don't just want to attract and recruit, we want to retain top talent. If people are leaving, we want to know why and what we can do better. So we have developed a Google survey. So it's in the form of a Google form that we share with people once they submit a resignation or intend to leave with us. Going down my little circle here, diversification and retention. I mentioned how great we're doing in terms of diversification, but also retention. We're at 87.9% in terms of retention, according to Desi's website, which is great. People come to us and they actually stay with us long-term. People like myself, they come here and they never leave. We've got a lot of people here with longevity. So it's just a true testament to what TPS is all about. Okay, so we talked about the interns. I mentioned the conferences that we've been, we were invited to and able to speak about implicit bias and how to overcome that and also strategies to diversify staff. Taunton was asked to be part of the Department of Education's Professional Learning Community in Diversification of Staff. And we had a team here at Taunton that would meet, I think for maybe for eight weeks, once a week virtually with the Department of Ed and TNTP, where we would meet with other districts and discuss strategies. It was really, really nice to network and find out what's working for other districts and what's not working and to have been invited to participate in something like that. I mentioned before, something that we're proud of is the, we continue to break down barriers in the elimination of the pre-employment physical that, like I said, is huge and thank you to the city for that. And something that we're really excited about, it's been a while since we've had a recruitment video. And we have announced us now, Communications Coordinator, and she and I are working on a new recruitment video. And we want to make it something geared towards the new generation, the Gen Z's. So we're going to do, make it TikTok worthy, we're going to Instagram it, we're going to snap it, we're going to do all that good stuff. So just a few of the things that I'm really proud of, of what we've accomplished. And just to share with you that we're a department that's always trying to have fun and promote employee engagement. So we got some pictures here from our job fair, pictures with our internship coordinator of the high school. That's, yes, that's me dressed in the 80s, because we did some decades of dressing up. Yes, I know, seems like there's more pictures of me, but that was Cynthia's doing, you know? But the only way to get pictures with people is to put yourself in a picture. So I was fortunate enough to meet the commissioner, Mrs. Monahan and I. And as always, it's always fun having out with school committee people there. And I believe that picture was taken at the job fair we had last year. So we're always trying to do fun things and stir up excitement here at TPS. And just to share some things that are coming up, these are some of the upcoming job fairs that we'll be attending. One of them will be virtual, but we have two fairs that we're registered for. And I think we have two more that we'll be attending. So again, this is all, even though we don't have a master list of the vacancies for next year's vacancies, we're being proactive and we're going to start looking out there to recruit potential candidates for those positions. And with that, I've come to the end of my presentation. And I wonder if anybody has questions now is the time.
Thank you, Dr. Butts. I appreciate the presentation. And I'll just go around the table and start with Mr. Laura, if you have any questions or comments.
Just a couple of comments. The, I just lost my track of, but the, as far as Desi, improving their certification on waivers, are they pretty up to date? Or are they taking a long time to get waivers?
Not at all. We, if we get, if we put in for a waiver, because of the shortage, if we apply for a waiver and we give them what they want, we could hear from them within 48 to 72 hours. We could expedite the review.
Good to know. The other thing is, I like the statement where this school system has implemented notification of all hires or non-hires. All the applicants who apply for positions are notified, whether they've been accepted or not. Because a lot of state and federal agencies do not respond to those who have not been considered for employment. So I think our system may have has a good track of notifying all candidates, because there's people looking for all different positions.
Right.
And if they're holding on or knowing what the school system is doing, if they're notified right away that they've not been considered, they move on.
Correct.
So that's good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. Butts, I'm sorry. Did you want to say anything else to Mr. Laura?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Butts, for your presentation. I just wanted to thank you for improving communication with candidates. I think that's very important. I also want to thank you for the internship program. It sounds, again, like it is something that is extremely resourceful and Bristol County Savings Bank, you know, for being a great community partner. As far as retention, you had mentioned that you have been utilizing exit interviews. How long have you been utilizing those for? And has the data from those exit interviews been helpful in helping us understand why or helping us?
Absolutely. Good question. We've been doing it for the past year, year and a half. Not everybody responds. It's a voluntary thing. So once we get notified of a resignation and my admin assistant, my wonderful Julie Muniz, she'll send them the link and ask that they complete the exit interview. It's not everybody, like I said, will do it. The people that have, you know, completed it, it is valuable information. And I'm happy to say people that leave it, they don't leave because they don't like TPS, but for other reasons, closer to home, commute, flexibility. Things are changing and people's needs and wants are different. So it's been a good tool, so we'll know how to better make ourselves more attractive to the workforce.
Thank you for your response. Thank you again for all your work that you do. I'm sure retention is important to you and the entire district and the United Committee for your work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vier. Mrs. Santos?
Just again, thanking you for your presentation and your enthusiasm. Honestly, for HR is infectious.
I love what I do.
I just honestly, I just have one question. As far as the rise in diversity, what do you attribute that to? Like, where are there certain strategies that you put into place in order to get more diverse applicants and hires?
Why do you think it's working?
Well, why is there like a more of an increase in Taunton Public Schools as far as the increase in diversity? Like, were there certain strategies or things like that?
Well, I think part of it is because with the support of Superintendent Cabral and the leadership team and all of you, we've been doing implicit bias training for the last few years. We've been doing implicit bias training and trying to diversify staff before the pandemic and before George Floyd hit and before any of that. So we had systems in place. We were doing cultural proficiency training and implicit bias training. So the hiring managers, because we work with all of the hiring managers, we worked with them to have them recognize their bias and to give them tips when they start going through resumes. People that you might put in your maybe or your no pile before, guess what? You know, there might be a reason for that gap in work history or look for something that might be out of the ordinary, somebody with foreign experience. Wow, well, then you find out that, you know, you get the idea that this might be a really diverse person and they could bring so much more of culture to the school and the district. So I think just recognizing their own bias and being cognizant of that in the entire recruitment process. And before, like I said, the A pile, the no pile, you know, now they're being more flexible. So understanding your biases is the first step. So I think that's what it is. And we also have been working on this internship program for the last, I don't know, five years maybe. And we have our own. We finally have people that went, can you imagine? We had them in high school. They came with us. They interned, they left, they went to college, they came back during the summers, they came back during the breaks. They did their stuff, they worked as an EA, they did their student teaching. And now they're full-time teachers with us. And they were our THS kids. So I was really excited that we had that pathway. And that pathway was started years ago. So I think we're all on the same plate now. We're like on the same page. And that's what people need to do.
No, absolutely. I totally agree. And I mean, obviously, it's improvement, but we could always have more improvement as far as.
It's always room for improvement.
Especially with, you know, teachers to represent the communities in which they teach. You know, to have more of that representation is really important.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos. Mr. Enos?
Just thank you, Dr. Butts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Shoves?
Thank you, Dr. Butts. I've had the privilege of working with her as I have tried to hire many, 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 many math teachers. And I have to say that I've worked under the old system. So looking at a lot of the new things that you've put in, the candidates' applications and resume uploaded that can be accessed anywhere other than in the building is going to be fabulous.
That was huge.
I remember summers running into Taunton High School to look at candidates' paperwork. So, you know, having the leadership team, being able to access that is huge. Sending those e-m messages, I mean, that was something that normally I would try to be very cognizant of doing, but sometimes you would miss someone. So it's nice to know that everybody is getting some response so that they know that they're valued. Whether we hired them or not, at least they know that they are valued. And they're more likely to apply again if another position comes up. If they don't hear anything from us, they're going to be like, well, Taunton Public Schools didn't want us. I'm not going to apply to them anymore. They get a nice response that, you know, they're going to be like, okay, like, at least I mattered when I applied. So I think that's important. The streamlining of the process, her and I have had multiple conversations about, I've recommended someone, she's given them the paperwork, and then we're waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting for them. And part of it was the physical. So I think that is huge that that's off the table, because I've had many young kids come to me and say, like, I didn't, I don't have insurance yet. So I couldn't afford to go do a physical because it's expensive and I didn't know where to go and I don't have a pediatrician anymore. You know, so taking that off the table, I think right now is really good. I've worked with you hand in hand trying to find diverse candidates. And so I can tell you how aggressive she has been out there trying to get highly qualified, diverse candidates that reflect our student population. And I definitely think, I agree, I think that we can do better. And I think we need to work in-house with our students, especially our kids at the high school, and see if we can get more of them to be interested in education. And I love the exit interviews. I think that's really, really important. I'd like to see the next time you do the presentation, that you give us some data on that. Like, give us more on what they're saying. Because it is important that if they're not leaving because of personal reasons and they're leaving because something that we can do better, then we need to know what that is so that we can do better. But outstanding job and I loved seeing this presentation. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shoves.
Thank you, Mrs. Shoves. Mrs. Fagan, Secretary Fagan?
Yes, hi. Thank you for your presentation. I have a question for you. How long, I know at one point we were talking about these people that weren't certified that came in and it didn't matter who they were, they just didn't have them. And there was a talk about that they were going to stop doing that. But I understand there's a shortage now. How long do they have to get certified once they're hired? To get there, to pass, we talked about passing that exam?
MTLS?
Yes, the MTLS.
I think what you're asking is how long would it take to move from an emergency license to an initial license? Because we hire them on the emergency.
Yep.
So it could take up to three years, which it has been, or even longer.
Shortened that. They wanted that, they wanted that done in a more timely manner. I was under that. Wasn't that the way it was for a while?
I'm not sure. Obviously, we want to get them fully licensed as soon as possible. But they need to show that they're working towards full licensure. And many times, the MTLS is what's, so I've been told, it's not readily available. If you don't pass the MTLS now, you have to wait X amount of time to submit another application, to retake the exams. And there's more than one MTLS exam that people have to take. So during this three-year period, they have to take the MTLS. But they also, depending on what their licensure is in, they also have to do coursework to show that, you know, that they're going to move towards whatever license that they apply for. So to answer your question, there's no quick fix. The emergency license has helped to obviously diversify and bring people in.
I just wonder if at some point, somebody might not do stuff in time and then they fall off.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so it really is up to them. But we have a list of the people that are on the emergency license. And actually, Bridgewater State College has been really great to us because I've been in touch with one of the professors there. We send them a list of all our emergency license holders with email addresses and contact information, and they're contacting them directly to say, hey, take advantage of this. So there is always the possibility that somebody's not going to get licensed or is going to have a lasp. And if they lapse, there's always the waiver.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Fagan. Thank you, Secretary Fagan. Thank you, Dr. Butts. I won't forget your name again, okay? I promise. So, my concern is, as your data shows, we're coming into April and May, which is the big hiring season. And we have a vacant HR manager position. What can we do to help?
To fill the HR manager position?
Is there anything we can do to help?
Well, let me think about that.
I mean, I'm just concerned because you're working with a very thin staff as you, as we saw, right? And if we're going to do our best due diligence, hiring the best and the brightest, we need to have people to interact. Because this, after all, is human resources, right? There's a human touch to this, not just the electronic version, which I love and I understand there's a multitude of applications. But the human touch, of course, is very critical. So, this job has been vacant for how long, the HR manager?
Since December.
Since December. So, we're going into February already, right? So, is there, is there something in the market that they're not out there or?
We've had candidates, but they didn't follow through. We've made, we've extended offers. But I guess we weren't competitive or they got a rebuttal or a counter offer from the existing employee, which is something that we're seeing a lot in today's labor, due to the shortage of labor. People are being very competitive. Yes.
I guess we just answered the question, how we can help. So, if there's an issue with budget, I think we, you know, through this superintendent, maybe want to address that and see if we can manage something. Because I know the field out there is very competitive and challenging. So, that's one of my main concerns is that we're coming up to April very, very quickly. I have a couple more comments. So, in the timeline, the process, okay, I understand the part of an application being reviewed. So, after the 10-day posting, the application being reviewed, if it's a teacher position, it's by the principal, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there, is it overwhelming for that principal to go through 20 applications that come in on the same day? Because they just made the deadline and they're all coming in the same day. Is there an issue with the principal not having enough time to vet those applications?
The principals, the hiring managers could take as long as they want to review their applications. But it's in their best interest to do it in a timely manner.
Right.
So, they don't have to. There's no deadline. It closes. The job will close. The post-it will close. But they still have time after it closes to review and interview candidates.
Exactly. But my point is, is that if that application review is over 30 days and folks want an answer, they've applied to six different school districts in the area, and we're taking 30 or 45 days to review the application. No fault of the principal, because principal has many duties, right? Is there a way that not just the principal is reviewing these applications?
We help the principals, the HR.
Maybe I missed something in the presentation then. I thought the hiring manager is the one that's reviewing the application.
But if they need help, they do. We also have access to that. So, when we have a need, especially when we have, I don't know, let's say special ed, they do a lot of hiring, yeah. We help them. We can help with the review process. So, and they're not the only ones. The principals and the APs and the curriculum supervisors in the school, in the high school, they have the ability to do it too. And they do.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. What, Mrs. Moynihan, she does a lot of recruiting. So, she's just reminding me that as the applications come in, when a new applicant applies, they get notified. If that is attached to THS, so that's attached to E-Pole, the principal gets an email saying you have a new application.
Sure. And I'm only speaking from experience because I've had multiple folks that have applied to TPS that the application review process took quite a while and we lost them to other districts. So, I'm only speaking from experience. And again, I just want to make sure that we have the resources in place to help streamline those reviews, whether it's a principal, whether it's your office, whether it's somebody in another management role. So, we don't lose the qualified candidates because as we know, it's a competitive environment out there. Okay? That's my only point. Superintendent, want to add something?
Yeah, I'll just give an example real quick. So, when we hired Cynthia Johnson to be our communications coordinator, I believe we had 14 applications. And Mrs. Butts, Dr. Butts, gave me the folder. And I gave her the folder right back and said, recommend the top three candidates that I should interview. So, those resources are available for our principals. But I also know some of our principals haven't worn that hat. I want to vet the staff that I'm going to be responsible for 184 days a year. So, I would play, back in the day, Mrs. Shoves, we would have to drive across the city and go through Leo's files. So, I would personally vet that because, again, I'm with that person 184 days a year. So, I unfortunately respect and rely on the support of central office. But as somebody that's going to be working in my building, that's something I want to play an integral role on. So, it does benefit the principal, to your point, Dr. DeMello. If you want to get the best and the brightest, then that's something you need to hop on right away and you need to perform your due diligence and not just look at the top person or the first person so that we do get, you know, those hidden jewels or those hidden gems or hidden potential that can blossom and really, you know, do the work that we need them to do in our school district.
Sure. And I appreciate that, Superintendent. I'm just looking at the numbers for April. Approximately 500 applicants. May, a little bit over 400. June, over 800. So, it's overwhelming. And that's, you know, that's where, that's the timing. You're talking about 14 candidates. So, we're talking about maybe 40 per school if we have 12 schools at 500 applicants. So, just something, if there's something that you can think of that can facilitate that piece so we don't lose those top-quality candidates. And I believe I have one more comment. A lot of pages here. I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. Going back to, I forget which colleague brought it up, on the emergency licenses and so forth. Is there a, I know there is because I think you mentioned this, there's a button you can push that you can tell us there are 35 teachers that are coming up to expire in June of 2024. And basically outreach to them, and I know you said you shared the email addresses to Bridgewater State University, for example, with the new program that's tuition-free, as a matter of fact, to make sure that these teachers are up and ready to do what they need to do, right? I mean, it's important. And we want to have a staff too that's qualified, right? We want someone that's accredited, qualified, to be the best we can be as a district. So, you know, making sure, because this has happened to me. I've had calls, right? You have a teacher calling you, oh, my God, I got a notice, ba, ba, ba. You know, what do I do? Well, my first answer, what have you done prior to the three years that you had as a waiver? Or two years as you had as a waiver, right? So, again, it's a human resource, a human element to this. So, the communication back and forth. And I'm sure you're doing that already, but maybe reinforcing it to our teachers so that they don't come at the 11th hour with the frantic pleas of assistance that sometimes can't be done. So, that's my only observation because I think that's important. And I know that with the opportunities available from Bridgewater State University and everything that's out there, it's going to be a lot easier. But just continuous communications, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your work.
Sure. Just so you know, there's no push of the button to get all the licenses. That's something that we actually have to compile.
So, you don't know which teachers expire or when they expire?
Yeah, but we do that. Like, you said it was a push of the button. But that's something that we have to analyze the data that we get and work with DESI to go through that list. It's not something that's automated.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, when you hire them, you know that they're coming in on emergency license, right?
Yes. And those we have, we've kept track of those. Yes.
Sure. Sure. Well, maybe there's something we need to add to the list, I guess, to make sure we have that available so that, you know, the teachers are notified and that at the 11th hour, there's not a frantic plea to, for assistance, let's put it that way. So, maybe it's not as easy as the button, but some way to facilitate it. Thank you.
Actually, that, if I just could add some closing comments, if you don't mind. So, regarding the emergency licensure, that is something as one of the urban chairs that we have advocated with Commissioner Riley is for some relief, continued extensions. Because it has allowed, not only has it helped us to diversify our staff and provide, you know, students with staff who reflect our community, our population, it's also allowed people who have been interested or may have expressed an interest in education, it's opened the door for them to get into education and realize that this is a profession that they are qualified and good at. So, it served a multiple purpose. So, I will continue to advocate for extensions or relief regarding the emergency licensure. Something that I will advocate for as well, because DESI does this all the time. They send us lists upon lists upon lists. So, I'm sure they must have the button. That they can push and provide us with the list of people who aren't on the emergency licensure. And then that will make our life easier as far as being able to communicate with those people. So, I will advocate for that Friday when we have our urban's meeting. And then just a couple other things too. Unfortunately, this is a very lively and a very positive presentation. But there also is a dark side to human resources, you know, investigations and. Potential issues with employee matters that the human resource does have to become involved in, which also takes up an immense amount of time in addition to all the work. So, I know Dr. Butts provided a very positive presentation. But there also is a side to human resources that we don't like to talk about. And Dr. Butts, myself, and our principals and our leadership team, that is something that we know, that we work on actively. And unfortunately, it's just like anything. It's the ebbs and flows. There are some years we have very minimal employee relation issues. And there are some years we have, you know, several or many employee relation matters. So, we address those as they come up. But that is an important role of the Human Resource Office. And just to clarify too, we do need to hire and replace the Human Resource Manager. But we have provided relief to the Human Resource Department. We do have a retiree with a lot of experience in that position who comes in and does provide support to the Human Resource Office so that we can, again, can stay afloat until the position is filled. And then something that I'm very passionate about is creating a pathway at the high school. Creating an education pathway. Because what I envision in the city of Taunton is a movement to reseed our staff with our own kids. And there are possible incentives that we can offer by maybe hiring high school graduates who come back to work in education, potentially placing them on a higher step. So, incentivizes them going into education, incentivizes them to come back to Taunton. And then I've also heard about programs working with the banks. And we have a great relationship with Bristol County Savings Bank and Town and Federal Credit Union. Perhaps we can look at some low-interest mortgage loans to help not only bring kids back to work for us, but also have them living in Taunton as well. So, I think that'll all be part of the work as far as my, our, our long-term strategic plan on how we reseed the Taunton Public Schools, Taunton Public Schools with our own.
Thank you, Superintendent. I just want to add one thing for clarification. I'm just trying to get the most qualified teacher in the classroom to teach our students, okay? And we spend thousands and thousands of dollars on professional development. And if that teacher is not committed to getting their licensure, then we shouldn't be spending thousands and thousands of dollars on that teacher. That's my personal opinion. So, all I want to do is make sure that the teachers that are committed to teach our students are the most qualified and have passed all the certifications they need to be in the classroom in front of our students. That's all I want to make as a point. Thank you again. Thank you so much, Dr. Butts.
Thank you for having me.
Next up, we have Superintendent's report. Superintendent Cabral?
Thank you. Outstanding presentation, Dr. Butts. So, I'm not going to read my report verbatim. I'm just going to summarize some key points. So, I apologize if you're following the report, but you can just follow along as I just highlight some key points. So, through the Baugh Foundation, we were able to send a team of, I believe, seven educators and administrators to California, in which we visited nine schools over an eight-day period and met with four leadership teams. So, it was a very, very intense visit. So, it was a very productive visit by district and high school leadership for high school experience and reimagining the high school. I was extremely inspired by our visit to San Bernardino Unified Public Schools where we saw meaningful and purposeful pathways which emphasized diverse aspirations through rigorous academics. But what was most important and most impressive was how they linked the vocational studies to the academic studies. So, when you, traditionally, when you think of vocational studies and academic studies, you think of two separate houses. But in this school system, with this high school, they were linked. And that was through this organization that they called academies and pathways. So, that is something that as part of our work, we're talking about how we can implement this at Taunton High School. So, very exciting, very exciting work that we'll be presenting, I believe, on March 6th, when the high school presents their school improvement plan. There was a very strong focus on faculty development. Dr. DeMello, as you mentioned, professional development, that is something that I've already discussed with Assistant Superintendent Christopher Barata, is they had a comprehensive professional development, not only at the system level, but at the building level. So, as part of a vision for a district comprehensive professional development plan, you had what the district's priorities were. And then each building, according to their school improvement plans, identified the professional development they needed at the building level for their staff in order to implement their school improvement plan. So, I thought that was something, again, as I shared with some of you, we have all the pieces. We just need to link them or be more strategic on how we connect them. At Arroyo High School, which is where Assistant Principal Bleno used to work, they showcased effective student and staff relationship building. It was just impressive to see and hear how the kids spoke about their teachers, how the teachers spoke about their kids, and how they spoke about each other. It was just such a collegial atmosphere. And again, that, a very strong social-emotional connection. Because in that building, all the teachers conducted social-emotional learning lessons where it was embedded in the academics throughout the day. There was also, again, as I stated, a very strong strategic connection pre-K through 12. The high school didn't work in isolation. The middle schools didn't work in isolation. And the elementary schools didn't work in isolation. There was a consistent through line when how the high school pushed down into the middle schools and how the middle schools pushed down into the elementary schools. And it was a cohesive, unified message, which is something, again, we have the building blocks. We just need to connect them here in the Taunton Public Schools. And again, I think you'll get a more comprehensive understanding of what took place and how the high school plans to link this work, how I plan to link this work at an upcoming meetings. But the school improvement plan for the high school, which we probably will make a one-hour meeting because it's probably going to be pretty comprehensive on March 6th before the school committee meeting. Next in my report, I'm very proud to announce part of our, part of the work that we are doing to, again, link the learning. Because we are not just a pre-K through 12 school system. I want to be a pre-K through 16 school system. And that means how do we partner with the junior high school and our colleges? So, we were awarded $50,000. Taunton High School was awarded $50,000 as part of their early college planning grant. This was awarded by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for early college program development with our partner, Bristol Community College. The program aims to increase access for underserved and marginalized populations. And the goal will be for students to graduate with a high school diploma and as many as 30 college credits, which reduces the college cost by nearly half. So, this will also distinguish traditional dual, this distinguishes from traditional dual enrollment by integrating with the college experience and providing additional supports. So, in addition to students possibly taking college-equivalent courses in the high school, we also want to get students off campus and into the colleges so they experience, they have that college experience. And studies and research find that students are more successful when they step foot on college. So, we are, I'm very optimistic that we will get approval. However, we are awaiting approval from DESI. And again, if this all comes to fruition, we expect our ninth graders to start in these programs or have ability to start in these programs beginning next fall. And last but not least, you know I'm proud to always state that we are a comprehensive school system. We hosted our band program, which Corey Beltrum was here last month, the director of performing arts. We hosted our first South Shore Conship Bands Exchange Program since 2019 at Taunton High School. Participation included high schools in Hanover, Hingham, Marshfield, Situate, and Taunton High School Symphony Band. The event highlighted cooperative performances and strong peer support. The culture that the band creates, not only at the high school, but the culture that exists among competing bands is something that is infectious and contagious and that I want to see spread throughout Taunton High School. And as always, kids, probably the highlight of the day for the kids, other than competing, was they got to enjoy some free pizza. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Comments, questions, Superintendent? I do have one comment, if I may. So, today at Bridgewater State University, DESI did hold a symposium on early college. And we had our very own Allison Goldu there. And I was amazed to find out there were six funding sources that we can tap into. And some are no longer available for this year, but three still are. And I believe Allison told us we're up for review next week. So, I put in a good word with the executive director from DESI, see if that helps. But I'm sure we're going to be fine. But anyway, there's definitely many, many opportunities. And I know we're going to succeed in that route. So, if there's no questions or comments, which is the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Thank you, Superintendent. Next up, we have G, Administrative Business Staffing Report. Which is the committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Next up, Taunton Public Schools Staffing Updates. The enclosure.
So, it's, just wanted to provide you with the monthly update on our staffing. So, as of today, we are 89% staffed. There were 23 vacancies. Majority of those vacancies exist at the district level and at the high school level. And we do have several schools that are 100% staffed.
Which is the committee?
Same procedure.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have the Taunton Public Schools District Enrollment Update. Superintendent?
Some good news. Well, I think it's good news, because I always get excited when I see that our enrollment is increasing. So based on the last time I provided you with an enrollment report, which was back on January 12th, our enrollment stood at 8,234 students. I am proud to report that we have 8,257 students enrolled in the Taunton Public Schools. A bulk of that new enrollment can be attributed to preschool enrollment, where we saw 20 new students enrolled in the preschool program. And the preschool program is something that we have supported through our Student Opportunity Act. We have also leveraged our ESF funds to grow our program. So I do believe that moving forward, thanks to the support of this committee, that we will, not only will our kids reap the benefits of being in a, in a, in a high-quality preschool program, but also, you know, our schools will reap the benefits as well.
Yes, Mrs. Shofs.
Just a question on the 12th grade. When I compared the enrollment from the beginning of the school year to now, it's quite, you know, quite a dip there. Are we losing the kids by dropping out for 12th graders, do you know?
I'll have to drill into that number and come back to you with some explanation or some rationale.
Yeah.
As to why, I do know by the time students get to 12th grade, very rarely will we lose them, because once they've made that commitment.
So that was surprising when I compared it.
It most likely can be attributed to the virtual school or the Taunton Alternative High School. But let me drill into that number and come back.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Lasse, if you don't mind making that note, and I will follow up on the next school committee meeting or the next enrollment report.
Great, thank you. Which is the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have Subcommittee Reports. We'll start out with Committee the Whole that took place January 30th, 2024. That was the meeting before, a joint meeting with our colleagues on the City Council. I believe it went very well. A lot of positive comments out in the community that we finally came together for the betterment of not only the city, but our students at whole. So I don't know if any of the committee members want to elaborate or discuss anything that took place that night, or any expectations, or anything else you want to share? Nobody? Okay, so I guess we left it where we're awaiting some answers back with a checklist that the superintendent prepared. And then according to that, we'll have further conversations as a committee to know what direction we'll move in regarding the Two Hamilton Street property. Yes, Mr. Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any indication from any of the city departments as to any reports or any inspections that have been done?
Not to date, Mr. Laura.
So do we need a motion to get yourself or somebody in contact with them to get a report ASAP?
If I may, we made that very clear that night, correct? I mean, we gave a punch list of what we wanted, so it's in their hands. I mean, what else can we do?
Well, if you wanted to authorize a superintendent or the superintendent's staff to follow up on those reports that are, you're going to hear me talk about them in a bit, a motion would be completely fine.
Well, all I'm thinking of is, you know, let them know that we are waiting anxiously for reports.
Mr. Laura, we planned this meeting a month in advance. We went through different dates that we attempted to meet with the City Council. Council President Potier was very kind to let us know that they had other agenda items regarding budget and other priorities that they couldn't see us until January 30th. So we were all there. I believe we were all in attendance. We gave a punch list. I mean, what else do we need to do?
Get them to move on the issue?
They know, I mean.
Do we need a person from our side to?
Mr. Laura, I think the intent of a school committee to go before the City Council shows that we are definitely interested in moving forward in full transparency. I don't understand why we need to make further requests. I mean, we all went in good faith. I don't know, unless I misunderstood the meeting.
Accepted, understood. But is there someone within our department that's having daily dialogue with anybody from the city?
So not to, if, Mr. Laura, if you're asking, if you're asking to make a motion, you can make a motion. Somebody can second it. Nobody has to second it. But if you want to make a motion to authorize a superintendent or someone on the staff to do that, you can. I understand what Dr. DeMello was saying. We did go before the committee. But if we want to go on record that we asked for the motion, that way, nobody can say that we let this slide because we made a motion and authorized me or some of my staff to follow up. That would be appropriate, because now we have this running record that we've been requesting these reports. That would just be my two cents if you wanted to make that motion.
And I would so move as a motion.
I believe, before we take the motion up, before we take that motion, we, Councilor Potier assured us that they would get back to us. If my memory serves me right, that was only a week ago. So I don't know what else we need to do. I don't, I don't want to, I don't know. Mr. Viera, please?
Yeah, no, I just, I want to echo the chairman's thoughts. I mean, we've asked for the same things multiple times. We've asked at three school board meetings. We asked the City Council directly. I don't know how much more direct we can be than perpetually asking for the same information over and over again. So I think there's been a very clear and a very distinct pattern. And I don't think we've minced words in what we're looking for. And I don't think there's really been any ambiguity. So I don't see why inaction is necessary. But again, I'm one of eight board members here tonight.
I'm actually not going to allow that motion to be heard. I don't think it's necessary.
No second, no discussion.
Okay, next item up, we have Committee the Whole report out. That was our retreat with Dr. Anthony Bent. We had a majority participation. I believe that it was very constructive. It's always a learning experience for me. I enjoy Dr. Anthony Bent. We had two new school committee members that were present. I believe the takeaway was that we are a committee. There's not one person that makes decisions. We all come together to make decisions. And at the end of the day, we're here for the students who we serve. So I don't know if the two committee members, two new committee members want to say anything? Mrs. Shofs, thank you.
Thank you. Well, obviously, it was my first retreat. And I've attended other professional retreats. I have to say, I absolutely positively loved it. I could have stayed there another couple of hours. I think it went by too quickly. I thought he brought a lot to the table, a lot of experience. I will say that I missed the few members that weren't able to make it, because I got to know people more than I, you know, more than just, you know, running a campaign and meeting you in, you know, different fundraisers. It was nice to really put a persona to each person, get a feeling for what's important in their lives, which will make our job much easier. And it was, obviously, we're all here because we love education and we love students. But that really, really came out during the retreat, that, you know, how important our students are, how important our work is, and that we are a team trying to do what's best for the students of Taunton Public Schools. And, you know, when I got home, my husband was like, "How was it?" I was like, "It was a fabulous evening." Like, I really, I could, I could definitely do a couple more with him. He did an outstanding job. And I know he wanted to do more with us. So I am looking forward to, Mr. Cabral's going to start doing the book that he recommended. And I'm going to start reading it. And I'm looking forward to doing that kind of interaction, because I think that brings us closer together as a committee. So it was well, well worth it.
Great summary, thank you. Mrs. Santos?
I think she pretty much said everything that I would have said.
Yeah, she did.
So thank you. But no, I agree, I think definitely getting to know everybody on a personal level helps with camaraderie. But I think also just emphasizing the solidarity of us as a committee as a whole versus just one individual trying to do things that we all are doing things together for the benefit of the, of the community and for students. So it was worthwhile.
Great, thank you. Any other members want to comment? Nope? Superintendent Cabral, sorry.
As a note I put in the, as you may have read in the newsletter this week, I would urge this committee to consider submitting an application to present at the upcoming MASC, MASs Conference regarding governance and school committee relationships with superintendent. You know, those are, that's, and I think you would be a model for other school systems to emulate or to model based on the work that you have, you know, taken on or agreed to take on. And I would be happy to put the application together and submit it if that's something that members want to consider. Just let me know when the time.
When is, sorry?
It's usually in November.
November.
It's usually November.
Great, you can take the lead, Mrs. Shofs. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the high school, well, on those, on those two, do we need motions to accept the reports or on both those items?
Yeah, motion to accept the report on Section H, Item 1 and Item 2.
Second in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have the Elementary School Subcommittee Chairman Laura.
The Elementary School Committee met this afternoon. Myself and Ms. Santos present. Presentation by, we welcome and listen to the school improvement plan presented by the principal of the Joseph Chamberlain Elementary School, Ms. Jennifer Peters. Chamberlain Elementary School supports students in grades pre-kindergarten through the fourth grade. Currently, the school's enrollment is 489 students. Of this number, we are extremely proud to support 352 general education students, 106 students with IEPs, and 31 students with, as multilingual learners. As with other elementary schools, which have presented their plans to us, Chamberlain is focusing on the improvement of student writing and the development of students' social-emotional skills. And with that, some of the highlights are that in writing, they are working on balancing their writing by incorporating more responding to literature, which also maintaining a writing workshop to build core writing skills to use when responding to literature. They focus many of the grade-level meetings on unpacking the writing prompts per unit and discussing the approach to take when teaching students. Also, they engage in learning walks so that they can celebrate the student learning that is happening. And on the social-emotional learning, they are tracking all the student support meetings to generate more baseline data on what types of supports and are most needed within the building. They also are expanding the, on the reset room practices to include bus academy, because they are having an increase of bus referrals to behavior issues. They continue working on Tier 1 on academics, on the therapeutic learning center to increase the engagement of the classroom. And this will help the reduction of incidents. Provide, they are providing Tier 2 and 3 social-emotional groups for students who scored below the 400 level on the SELLUS program. And they continue to work effortlessly to improve the environment, the concerns working with parents and with all of the workers within the building. That concluded our meeting, which ended at 5:02 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Would the wish of the committee, questions, comments?
Or should I accept the report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have the high school Subcommittee. Mr. Polowski's chair was absent. Mrs. Fagan is acting chair.
Yes. The high school Subcommittee met this evening with myself and Mr. Viera, and Mr. Polowski couldn't make it tonight. And we met with Sarah Buckley, who is on her maiden voyage as the principal of the Benjamin Friedman School. And it was very impressive to talk to her, like what was going on over at Chamberlain School. The focus, it seems to be, district-wide focus now is, you know, the clear understanding of grade-level writing standards and demands is demonstrated through the consistent implementation of rubrics and exemplars. And so it's happening at the elementary and middle school level and emphasis placed upon supporting our students with disabilities and our English-language learners. We had a very interesting conversation with her and the focus that she has. As she, you know, she was a former English teacher and headed the English department at the high school. And, you know, this is a whole new adventure for her being in a middle school. But clearly, they've seen a need all around that kids are not reading enough. And you can also see the effect that COVID had. And you hear it nationwide, too, if you turn on the television, about all the things that were really lost by kids during that, that whole period of not being in school. So they're actively looking at all these different things, trying to make sure everybody's on the same, same page where they are trying to get them to do better in reading and write. The writing skills is what they really need. And we talked about something that I used to talk about here years ago. And I don't know if you got in for this, Mr. Cabral, the five-by-five writing style, which is now gone by the wayside. Nobody wants to do that anymore. It was five paragraphs and five sentences, and that didn't help kids to write either. But it's just incredible, the time that she took to talk about what she wanted to do and what she saw there. And, you know, it's her first year there, so she's trying to get a handle on it. And as I think you said it, Steve, she was, she wanted to build a baseline. So she's in the process of doing that. The other thing was the same thing you mentioned, Mr. Laura, the social and emotional support, not only for the students, but for the families and the staff. That was the whole focus of that, too, that they needed that. And that is integrated. She was talking about this, certain teachers, depending on the subject that they taught and whether or not they wanted to do that, because not everybody was comfortable with that. It would depend on what class, but they all at least got a class of that a week. So that was important. And it still goes back to kids that just lost control of things because they weren't in school, they didn't have a routine, and trying to get them back on track. And the other thing that she did that I thought was impressive, she said, she set her own standards here with the, a progress monitoring tool, that what she's looking for to do, because I, she had some comments in here about the MCAS test. And she said, the skills in the writing were so far, you know, got lost so much that there were zeros and ones. And she said a zero meant the kids didn't even really do much of anything, and there were quite a few of them. And she said, "It's not that hard to push the zero to a one and a one to a two to get those numbers back up." So she's very positive, very hopeful, ready to go out there and fight the battle. And I was frankly very impressed with her enthusiasm and what she sees as a future for the Friedman Middle School. And Steve, please feel free to comment if you.
Yeah, I just want to echo same things you're saying. And I just thought it was wonderful how it seemed like they were constantly self-reflecting and their goals and looking at them against their results. And, you know, the instructional leadership team and, you know, that's made up of stakeholders in the educational community. And again, they're constantly looking at and reevaluating their work and seeing what can they do better and how can they improve. And, you know, it's something that I appreciate personally. And I, you know, I try to do, and I think we all try to do, hopefully, weekly or even daily. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
So that's, that's the report.
Thank you. Which is the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Secretary Fagan. Next up, we have Finance and Law Subcommittee. Tonight, we came together with Mrs. Shofs, Mr. Viera, and myself. And we had a, first item was a use of facility. We discussed one organization that is paying for the facility because it's a for-profit entity. And I know that there's been much discussion at the last meeting with City Council, how do we distinguish, you know, the Two Hamilton Street is, of course, being for public access. And it's the same process as we have in front of us tonight. It's a use of facilities checklist that goes through. And whether it's a profit or for nonprofit depends on who's paying what. So that was explained by Assistant Superintendent Finance, Mrs. Monahan. That was accepted by all members. Next up, we had the Special Education Expense Service Update. And year-to-date, we're at a total of $39,674.24. We have budgeted $50,000. So, I'm sorry, year-to-date, we have a balance. Did I say that correctly? Our balance is still $39,674.24. So we've only expensed ten thousand, three twenty-five, seventy-six out of the fifty thousand dollars, so we're, we're in good shape until fiscal year end. And, uh, I guess we'll take, uh, two motions on that for now, use of facility in special education. Uh, does anybody want to move a motion on those two?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And Item 3 would be bills payable, uh, in the amount of two million, six hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, there were a couple of comments. Uh, first, uh, Mr. Vera had mentioned, um, to bring in an organization, let's see if I have it noted correctly, uh, on page twelve of your, of your warrant, Coaching for Change, to get an update on the progress of that, uh, organization in Tom Public Schools. I believe the superintendent will get that for us, if that's what was decided upon. I had mentioned on page five, a update from Associates for Human Services. Uh, we usually have an update from them when they come in, so we've agreed, uh, to put that on the action item list, not only the Associates for Human Services, but the Coaching for Change. And I also, uh, requested to vote present on item page twenty-eight, which is the Pride Inc. organization, where I serve as, uh, Board of Director and on the Finance Committee in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. So all of those items were listed and voted unanimously in favor. Any questions, uh, comments? What are the wishes of the committee? Mr. Vera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, motion to approve the bills payable in the amount two million, six hundred, one thousand, eight hundred, thirty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents, and adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have new business. We'll start off with the Superintendent School Committee Book Study, and you can elaborate on that, Superintendent?
Yeah, I, I won't read the memo verbatim, but I'll just kind of summarize some high points. So this is something that I've always, uh, wanted to do with a school committee. So this is a new initiative that is aimed at professional growth, and I believe it'll also model lifelong learning through a collective book study. The initiative will replace one superintendent's report per month, where we will cover one chapter through, uh, which I will summarize, and we will lead, uh, and lead you in the discussion. So I believe this activity will model and emphasize the importance of group professional development and continuous learning for our students, our staff, and our caregivers. Uh, I will develop the reflective questions that will be provided for each chapter to encourage meaningful group discussion. Participation in the readings is encouraged, but not mandatory. So we're going to go slow to go fast, one chapter at a time. We will summarize the chapter for you. I understand some of you have very busy, active schedules, so you don't have to worry about reading the chapter, but you are encouraged to read the chapter if you have the time and the desire. So I believe this will enhance our collective knowledge and our governance capabilities with the potential for ongoing practice. So again, I, I am grateful to the committee and their willingness, uh, to participate, and let's see how it goes.
Right, and I believe we all got the book in our packet at night of the retreat, and if those that weren't attendance can get it from the superintendent directly.
I have it in my office.
Thank you. Uh, Item 2, Superintendent's FY-25 Budget Message, see enclosure, Superintendent?
So again, I'll, I'm going to just highlight some key points, and I'm going to try not to sound like in actuaries, but I'm just going to try to share some highlights regarding the budget, and you'll have a more comprehensive, uh, presentation later in the school year for myself and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. So Governor Healy's FY-25 budget, um, proposal was fifty-eight point one-three billion, which is two-point-one billion over fiscal twenty-four. Aid to districts is up by two-hundred-and-sixty-three million to six-point-eight-five billion. Uh, the governor is utilizing three-hundred million from the Student Act, Student Opportunity Act Investment Fund to fund, to fully fund the fourth year of the Student Opportunity Act. The Student Opportunity Act will be funded through fiscal twenty-seven, so we're entering fiscal twenty-five, that means two more years of student opportunity funding. Circuit breaker, so four-hundred-and-ninety-two million was allocated to special education circuit breaker, which is a decrease of seven million, and charter school reimbursement was actually reduced by thirty-three point seven million to a hundred and ninety-nine million. So the Student Opportunity Act highlights, it establishes a higher foundation budget for key rates in education areas, special education, uh, free and reduced lunch, healthcare costs, and also our multilingual learners. Those were the four key areas that the Student Opportunity Act, uh, was implemented to address. They also added two new tiers for low income, so there are now twelve tiers for low income. Tom Public Schools is in the tenth decile, so we are hovering around sixty-four, sixty-five percent free and reduced lunch, so that means six-point-five out of ten kids, uh, free and reduced lunch, so almost seven out of ten kids in our school system. Also, the inflation factor, so I'm going to just spend a little time here on the inflation factor, because it's very important to note that for the last two fiscal years, twenty-three and twenty-four, true inflation, true inflation was fifteen percent, eight and seven percent respectively. So true inflation the last two years, fifteen percent. By statute, by statute, the governor can only increase or use an inflation factor of four and a half percent, so that's nine percent. So let's do some fancy math, fifteen percent true inflation minus the inflation factor of nine percent, that puts us in a six percent deficit. So we know that costs aren't going down, so we, that inflation is carrying over into this fiscal year. And unfortunately, uh, it looks like the economy is starting to balance off. The receipts that the state is receiving through tax collections, possibly through a lot of investments in which people had to pay, uh, pay taxes on, and the true inflation factor for this year is only one-point-three-five percent. So if inflation, to start the year, the fiscal year, were down six percent, and the inflation factor is one-point-three-five percent, we are going, I think we have reached the point as a school system where we are limited in our ability to grow. So right now, my focus as Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Monahan, our focus is to sustain the programs and the staffing levels that we currently have in place, and if we are going to be adding staffing, then we're going to need to have some hard conversations about positions or programs that we need to reduce or potentially replace in order to bring new staffing or new positions onboard. I think that's where we're at now, in reading the tea leaves and looking at the projections, uh, through a presentation that I attended last week, it looks like the receipts for next year may be, at the state level, may be lower than this current fiscal year. And I think everyone is aware, too, that the governor had to make some reductions in this year's operational budget. So again, just want to make the committee aware, I know we have some, um, you know, very excited ideas and programs they want to implement, but I think we've reached, potentially reached, uh, limit to grow unless we start looking at positions or programs we want to cut to bring new positions and new programs onboard. But again, we'll continue to, uh, monitor this very closely. This was just the first bite of the apple with relationship to the budget. The House will present their budget, the Senate will present their budget, and then in June, we'll know the final number. Uh, so at the state level, foundation enrollment, so total population at the state level, uh, increased by two-hundred-and-twenty-five student. There's a typo in your memo, so I apologize. Our foundation enrollment actually increased by a hundred and sixty students. Last year, it increased by one-thirty-five, this year by one-sixty. That's about the size of the Galligan School. That's almost three-hundred students, I mean, if, when you do, when you do the math. So we, we are growing, and again, with the growth comes additional Chapter Seventy dollars. Uh, the Tom Public Schools Foundation Budget overall, when you, uh, when you factor in the city's required contribution in what the state provides in aid, that came out to an increase of eight-point-six million, so six-point-five-one percent. The city's required contribution is two-point-five-nine, that increased by six percent, but unfortunately, unfortunately, having analyzed the end-of-the-year report, uh, the city is going to meet net school spending, so the city will already be over net school spending. I forecast, uh, based on the projections that Assistant Superintendent Monahan and I have conducted, that the city is going to be at around a hundred and four percent net school spending, which is still two percent shy of where we were several years ago, but it does show commitment, and again, I want to be fair, it does show commitment that the city is working hard to get up to the a hundred and six percent net school spending. But our overall budget, when you take last year's, last year's budget of about a hundred and fourteen million, and you add the six million that we're receiving in Chapter Seventy aid, plus the difference in the charter school reimbursement, we're probably looking at an operational budget of somewhere around a hundred and twenty-one million dollars. And that's probably the number that Assistant Superintendent Monahan and I will be using when we put our budget documents together. So there was noticeable increases in vocational, in little income components. Uh, most of the significant increase can be attributed in our funding, again, funding sources, because for every student in certain categories, the state provides us with dollars for those students. So we did see a significant increase, and I believe it's on the back of your memo I provided you with a breakdown, we did see a significant increase in, uh, in elementary school, which increased by one-point-three million dollars. Vocational school, again, adding that eighth Chapter Seventy program, construction craft laborer, that helped generate, uh, Chapter Seventy revenue of one-point-three million dollars, and unfortunately, because we do serve, you know, some students with high needs, uh, that low income did increase by two-point-nine million dollars. So overall, Chapter Seventy is up six million dollars, and you can expect a budget, this operational budget of somewhere around a hundred and twenty-one million dollars, and for the first time in two years, I also want to preface the committee, for the first time in two years, we will be dipping into our reserves. Okay, so we will be using some of our reserves to balance the budget, which will, you know, pretty much allow us to continue rolling all our programs and all our services moving forward. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them now, but if not, I think most of your questions will best be answered during our budget workshop or when Assistant Superintendent Monahan and I provide you with our budget presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions or comments from the Superintendent? I think it's going to be a, a couple of months that we are doing a lot of work and making sure we get things, uh, the best we can. Uh, on the new business, of course, we're not going to discuss it tonight, but I, I want the committee to consider, uh, we, you know, we keep hearing school improvement plans come before us, and we have, you know, principals that are very passionate and want to share more and more and more, and I think we're not allowing enough time. In the past, we used to go into the schools, and, uh, they have sometimes parents and students available to meet us, not required, not necessary, but I think we should think about moving forward to go back to that old system, uh, and allow more than at least thirty or forty minutes, and, and, and visit the school. I mean, you know, a lot, a lot of new additions have been made to the school properties, like the reset rooms and so forth. I think it's important for us to visualize and, and see what's, what's actually going on, so something to consider in a, at a future agenda item, uh, if you don't mind. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have unfinished business. Yes, Mr. Laura? I'm sorry, Mrs. Schaffs, I'm sorry.
To that.
Sure.
I do think that's really important, because I knew a lot of the school committee members because of those visits, and it was important for the different departments or the different programs to be able to put a, put a face to the people and see the building, so that when we have presentations, you have a better feel for what's going on, so I would definitely support doing something like that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Uh, any other comments? No? Yes, Mrs.?
Is this still new business?
Sorry?
I'll reserve my comments when you have the word.
Okay, yes.
Is, is this still new business?
This is new business, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral, you called me about, um, we-
We have to set up a, um, at, just to notify about an athletic Subcommittee that we're going to try to arrange with Mr. Ronda Vianelli about what he's doing over at the, with athletics. That was one thing, and, um, you wanted to talk about a field trip to make sure it was announced, it was canceled, wasn't this Tom School?
I'll have that under the table.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vera?
Um, I don't know when the appropriate time is or isn't, uh, mention this, you know, we start the meetings, we approve the minutes pretty quickly. There was an era in, uh, the long-range plan and Subcommittee in the, the minutes.
Okay.
I don't know when an appropriate time would be to possibly correct it, if we can make a motion to go back to the minutes.
Sure, I mean, that we can revert back to the minutes, absolutely. Is there a motion to revert back to the-
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Vera?
On, on page nine in the Subcommittee meeting, says the building was thirty-six-hundred square feet, the building's thirty-six thousand square feet, so it's just something that I, uh, just thought it was important for, to, I know it's a minor detail, but I think it should be accurately noted.
It's okay, we'll, we'll make the correction, uh, no problem at all. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, motion to, uh, accept the revision to the minutes of January seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up, we have, did you want to make any comments at this time?
Obviously.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have unfinished business, action item updates. Uh, first off, we have the joint meeting with City Council on Tuesday, January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, Two Hamilton Streets, see enclosure, I think, Ms. Laura, your answers are right here. Mr. Superintendent, please?
So I, I won't go over the first paragraph, because I think, uh, Dr. DeMello did a nice job kind of articulating, um, how we felt about the meeting and what the general consensus was. I know I received a lot of positive feedback from staff who watched the meeting, and, uh, they were very appreciative of the fact that we were being thoughtful of the emotions and the human element, and that we also want to be very thorough in our analysis with, in our, the way we engage the public regarding the five, uh, concepts that we laid out that evening. Uh, I also think that it's important to emphasize that, uh, the council members, uh, did, did weigh in and provided some support, and they did articulate some concerns regarding the different proposals, but it seemed like everybody at the table, um, either, either agreed with, I believe, one, two, or three of the concepts, knowing that the, that these ideas or these concepts are a menu. We could do one, we could do two, we might be able to do all. So again, it's just ideas that we need to continue vetting publicly. Uh, the only piece that I want to, I want to focus on, I believe, is the last paragraph, so I want to get, I, and I'll read this, because I want to continue to emphasize that there will be interest, uh, from the school committee regarding the potential uses of the Two Hamilton Street. Our participation in the meeting was primarily to express this interest and to share the possible uses, however, we must have assurances, uh, that the facility is structurally sound and compliant with current building codes and ADA requirements before making any decisions. To this end, we have expressed the need for more comprehensive assessments of the facility, including structural, architectural, ADA, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, hazardous waste, and environmental aspects, as well as an appraisal and lease review. So I believe those were comments, uh, that we expressed here in a meeting, those are comments that are also expressed during the joint meeting, and, um, those are, you know, those are reports that my office will continue to monitor and request so that we can make an informed decision once we begin engaging the public. And I will, probably within the next meeting or two, I will, I will provide you with a timeline, as far as I foresee, the surveys, the forums, and how we engage students, how we engage staff, and how we engage the community regarding those concepts that we laid out there, and who knows, somebody may bring something to the table, and we'll be like, why didn't we think of that? Right, so and it'll probably be a kid, what, no, no one, right, it'll probably be a student of us. So again, I just want to provide you with a quick summary, and again, I want to have a running record, I want to have minutes that we can refer back to on how these meetings transpire, because everybody seems to have a different recollection after these meetings take place.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, next up, we have the action item update, uh, if you kindly refer to the list in front of you. Uh, tonight, we've added two items, which was the Coaching for Change and the Task Updates. Is that correct? Did we do that? We did that following already, correct? Okay. And there's a one item I'd like to add, if possible, and that's to bring in our, our partners from CPAC. Uh, I think by Massachusetts General Law, we're supposed to have two presentations a year? Or at least one?
At least one, so I'll reach out.
At least one.
Yeah, I believe, I'll, I'll check the calendar, they might be on the calendar already. If not, I'll make sure to get it out of to our calendar.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, so if we could, uh, make a motion, or a motion would be in order to add that to the action item list?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
And if I could just add, too?
Yep.
I believe, Mrs. Monahan, you are hosting a meeting tomorrow here.
I'm hosting, uh, the presentation on Parents' Procedural Safeguard, Parents' Guardians' Procedural Safeguard.
So tomorrow night, which is something that has been hosted with CPAC, the Tom Public Schools will be hosting a Parents' Procedural Safeguards regarding individual education plans and their rights, will be hosted here in the library. And I believe you have over fifty who have responded?
We have, so far, fifty, I think, as we presented by our attorney. It's a mandated presentation, we're required to do here.
Thank you.
Miss Lyons, yep, yep, great. Yes, Mr. Vera?
And what, I, what time was that from, to and from?
Five o'clock.
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Thank you.
Five thirty, thank you. Uh, and on the action item, uh, action item list, what do you call this? Action item update? Uh, there's an item here with, uh, the East Town Elementary School. I know there's been some dates floated out there, uh, and I just want to be clear that, uh, this is a, a school committee, how should I say, collaboration, so I think we all need to be well-informed in advance of what we're planning on doing with that, because we've worked very hard to make sure it's done the right way. We've entertained nine-hundred-some-odd surveys from the community, and I think this is a community event that, you know, we all need to be, uh, aware of, so, do you want to say anything about that, Superintendent?
Yeah, correct, so, uh, I know, I know, so, the cat's out of the bag. The, the naming has been placed on the building, uh, we are, we do have it covered so that we can have an unveiling. A date has not been established with my office yet regarding the ceremony or regarding the dedication. And obviously, I want to be mindful of the veterans, but I also want to be mindful of school committee members and their time schedules, because I want to have as many school committee members and their time schedules, because I want to have as many school committee members there as possible when we do the unveiling. Typically, selfishly, I was hoping to time it right around Memorial Day. I think that would be appropriate, but also, again, I want to make sure that we can have as many as much representation from the school committee, because this was a project that you motioned to approve to honor Lance Corporal LaPointe.
Do I understand the letters are already on the building?
Covered.
We have to wait till May? We can't do it any sooner than that?
It's taffree, Mr. DeS.
Taffree? It's going to be fifty degrees this weekend. Okay, well, maybe. The groundhog, it said only six more weeks of winter, so we can rely on that, right? Anything else for action items? Okay, great. Do we have motion in order to accept the action item update with all the amendments?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.